This is the Select Board's meeting, Monday, July 29, 2024. Wacoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. Streamed live on Town of Mashpee website, It is 6:30, and we're convening in open session. We'll start off with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and I'd like a moment of silence, please. Thank you. A discussion approval of the following minutes. We're going to hold off on the Monday, June 24. She has them redacted, but she didn't send them out, so.
That will make it easier.
The track changes don't show.
Gotcha.
So we're going to do that for next week. So I need approval for regular session, Monday, July 15, 2024, regular session.
So moved.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Discussion and possible action of proposed October 21, 2024, town meeting warrant articles with regard to wastewater. Wastewater Superintendent Jared Meter. Good evening, Jared.
Good evening.
Evening.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you. So I submitted a few articles this year, or for this next town meeting. I don't know what order everybody has them in, so I'll just kind of go with my order. So the first one I put in and I submitted for was a facilities operator. And actually, two of them together, I can discuss at once, which is the facilities lead operator. So I know from the beginning, one of the plans was to try to go with contract operations. After looking more in depth into that cost and doing a cost analysis, we discovered that the original proposal was put together as an operator for four hours a week, or four hours a day, five days a week. And the whole contract would cost roughly estimated $880,000. After looking into the size of our plant, we're required to have, follow the New EpiC staffing plan through the DEP, and that says we're supposed to have 3.2 operators. I'm an operator, so I can always count myself. But if we do with a contract ops, I can't intermingle with them. We become separate. So at $240,000 an operator annually, which was a lot more expensive than planned. So after talking with the town manager, we put together just a quick, we figured we could get two operators for the price of one. After looking at our benefits package and everything, and we went with the Cadillac, you know, benefits package. So those two articles were to fund those positions.
Do you think there's going to be a problem getting help?
So looking at where I, you know, proposed to put them on the pay scale, I think the lead operator, we should have no problem getting somebody to come over. The other position is designed more to be an investment in our community that, you know, it'd be great if we can get a licensed operator. But if not, it's a position that we can train and, you know, build an operator at, you know, for the town. And it's, once they get past the training portion, they get their licenses, the pay scale is right up there where it's going to be on the higher end, and we shouldn't lose them to anybody. I just know even with contract ops right now, they're having a hard time even staffing their people, and they're not in the business of training usually. So that's how, you know, I think it'd be best for us to invest, go forward. And like I said, I could always act as an operator as well.
Is it, let me ask you, is it the hours, the amount of hours that they're required to put in? Or is it just the operation of the plant? Or is it just the training that's required? I don't know. What makes it so expensive, the pay scale?
So it's a, nobody really gets out of high school and says, hey, I want to be a wastewater operator.
They know the salary.
Yeah, it's usually people that are in mid-30s. Their career is kind of dead-ended. Now they got a family, they got houses to pay for, and so they look for that government job that, you know, has security and room to grow. And so we get them later in life, but there's, you know, not too many people that want to go into it. Like me, it was an accident. I came back from Iraq, decided I don't want to be in law enforcement anymore, and then started looking around for jobs and said, oh, that looks interesting. And I toured the plant, and I was like, this place is great. So, and that's what the hope is, is we get more people like that and train them ourselves. I know that Chatham is probably the exception on Cape Cod. They have a phenomenally run facility. It's a beautiful facility, but it's, you know, the exception to the rule usually. And they're even having a hard time getting people. I think they're supposed to have six full-time operators, and they have basically two.
And is there contract, or did they hire?
They're contract ops as well. And so it's, that's the hard part. So even if we go contract ops, there's no guarantee we're going to have people. So this was kind of the direction, you know, could save us, like I said, for the price of one operator. We could get two operators within the town.
Can I ask you, how many, how long do you think it takes to get the education you need to help, to operate, or be a part of the operation?
So the rule of thumb usually is, for the grade four license, we say about 18 months. There are some formal schools you can go to, but they're very limited. It's more like you get handed all the books, and it's a big stack of books like this, and you read through them and you teach yourself, and then you go to a course where each week they kind of just touch upon the chapters of the book, nothing in depth. Ultimately, it relies into digging into the books.
Gotcha.
And it's something that I did. I did it, you know, while you're at work, you're always learning, and it's better to touch it and play with it as you're learning.
Gotcha, I gotcha. It's a little late in the game to just ask for someone to come in and get some training. We'll hire you. Now we need to have someone that we have to hire. Gotcha.
Mr. Collins?
I just want to caution the board that the jury is still out in terms of the final recommendation. But obviously, the superintendent and I did have a discussion relative to the placeholder, which I thought was prudent, because although I have said to the Select Board, and I have said consistently to the Finance Committee, that I want to go with a contracted service. At the same time, what I don't want to do is waste money if we can be cost-effective in saving it. So there are two things that need to be evaluated. One is the operational efficiency, and secondly, the cost-effectiveness to whatever it is that's recommended. We're going to do our due diligence. I'm fully aware that this was coming forward because he had a deadline, and we want to do what's in the best interest of the town ultimately. But obviously, it would have been unwise to just say, we're not going to even consider this, looking at some of the numbers. So that's where we're at. We're going to continue to evaluate everything. And it's not just the personnel and the benefits and everything that goes with it. It's also the assets, whether it be a pickup truck or whatever the case may be. We want to take a look at the full package, which we will do, and we have done in part, and we will continue to do. So by the time this gets ready for execution, you should have a better idea in regards to whether or not the jury is out.
Madam Chair, I do know that the Cape Cod Commission has said over the past few years that the folks that work in the industry, they're aging out and they're retiring, and there is no one really coming up to replace them. So the job market has been, for a while, extremely competitive. It is rather rigorous. Once you get through the book, I hear the test is like pretty difficult. Most people that take it don't pass it the first or second time. Sometimes it takes them three, four tries to actually nail it and get certified. So it is rigorous training. It's not easy to do.
John?
No, I mean, and just clarification. The order we have it is the assistant and then the lead on our first page, so. But yeah, I mean, obviously, it's for discussion, so it's something for us to consider. But I'd be curious to see what the estimates are for, you know, in-house outsourcing. But to Dave's point, I agree, and I think actually Jared mentioned that, the ability to, if we can get that lead, then train within, that's probably going to be our, that might be our best, you know, bet, but.
Michaela?
I look forward to, first of all, thank you for doing this and bringing it forward. I look forward to learning more about operational efficiency and final costs. And I'm glad we can continue the conversation.
Tom, any other questions for one?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
So on the next page, I go into an article about utilizing previous funding that was approved at another town meeting in fiscal year 2022, Article 19, for groundwater recharge evaluation in the Wacoit Bay. The verbiage on that article was a little bit tight in the explanation portion back in 2022. And we heard at the town meeting, obviously, the one question during the $96 million article was, when are we going to do testing and monitoring? So at that point, we decided to switch our focus for the Phase 3, going out to the Wacoit Bay watershed. There is a cost looking at recharge, and we realize that by doing that, we did previously have an article approved. We want to take that money and shift it over. So if you'll see in the next article, just below that, it says transfer the sum of money to the Wacoit Bay watershed permit, and those are what the two articles, one's rescinding, and then we just want to reutilize that money.
Okay.
Any questions on that?
Questions on that?
I think a lot of the community is going to be excited to have that move forward. Because I feel, I think a large part of the community feels as though Wacoit's been neglected a bit in the phasing of other projects.
Okay, the next article, we're looking at $45,000 to evaluate to existing wastewater facilities. I know this has been an on and off topic over the years. We were just recently approached by Southport and Willow Bend, both, you know, showing desires that they would like for us to take them over. So we did, myself and one of the engineers from GHD walked through and just did a surface evaluation, and both facilities look great, very promising for us to take over. And more importantly, they have recharge capability that we're lacking. So this $45,000 is now to look at the bones of those plants. We want to make sure that we don't, you know, take over something that could turn out to be a large cost for the town. With that, we also have to discuss, like, things like they have escrow accounts. How long do we maintain those escrow accounts for them before we can either give the money back or it gets spent on any possible expenditures that we weren't anticipating? So we just want to evaluate.
What if, I'm sure the people that live in those communities pay for it?
So we're trying to get that information now for the specific homeowners, like, how is it broken up and how do they do their billing? And then ultimately, if we do take them over, just they become part of our billing process. It's, I think it's a benefit for everybody, because the more customers we get on, the cheaper the costs become for us, that shared, you know, cost to operation of the facilities.
Now, by taking over the other facilities, does that affect our flow at all?
No, they have their own treatment facilities. One of the benefits, like if Southport, one of the concepts that's going through our heads right now is ultimately, they want, we want to take over the high schools treatment facility. But if we were to take over Southport, we would probably abandon the high school facility, get rid of that cost the way around, and use it as more or less a pump station to go to Southport. So we reduce that, that older facility. And then as well as, it would just, like I said, recharge is the hardest thing for us to find right now with all the regulations.
And Madam Chair, Southport recently, I mean, it wasn't that long ago, they rebuilt it, right? At least retrofitted it and brought it up to par. I think Windchime also.
Yeah, they did $4 million dollar increase. And both people have given us their records, finance records, just so we can go through and see what their operating costs for each year and how much. So it's actually very beneficial to us, because we can see all what their costs are, and they're, they're about roughly $200,000 a year. That's including their labor and chemicals, whereas if they come in with us, we can reduce those costs, because it'll be the shared labor. And as well as, when we buy our chemicals, they'll be in bulk for our facility as well as theirs.
Now, do they have maintenance people for their?
They have contract ops, four hours a day, five days a week. And so those will be satellite facilities. They are small enough that we can put them in a rotation. So when the plant staff goes out to do their rounds, that would be part of their rounds, to go hit these stations, check these stations, spend a few hours a week working on preventative maintenance, greasing and oiling things to keep it going.
What's the, what's the life cycle, typical life cycle on a plant that size for restoration and things? As you mentioned, they have an escrow. You know, it's been updated at least once, I think, since that facility was put in. And so, I mean, it'd be beneficial for us to take over it while it's still new and.
It's about 20-year lifecycle. Yeah, everything's usually in about a 20-year lifecycle. I mean, obviously, things do break earlier than they're supposed to, but that's usually a result of just bad preventative maintenance. So, and that's what we're going to look at, to see how well that maintenance has been imposed. We've got to pull things apart and actually climb into things to get that, you know, like I said, it looks great on the surface.
I want to come back to the previous article.
Yes.
So we're looking at the site for Wacoit Bay watershed. And as David said, I think everybody is going to be very, very excited to see that this is, this is coming into place. I believe we had identified a site before. Can you just talk a little bit about why it's important to spend the money to do this kind of work now?
So when we look at sites, obviously, there's, there's just real estate issues. Then there could be conservation restrictions. Some sites are like Article 97, they call it, which we really can't do much on at all. Now they have different regulations regarding, like, vernal pools, how close we can do those, or white cedar swamps, which apparently I learned Mashpee has the largest white cedar swamp in Massachusetts, of course. So those are the things we have to look at and rule out, plus it's other contaminants that we could be competing against. We've had sites brought to us, to our attention, like the Air Force's PFAS cleanup site is a site we're potentially looking at. There is another site, and I don't want to speak wrong, if I can remember real quickly. Cannot remember the name of it. Getting caught up in Wacoit Bay, like I said, this was just a recent shift. So, but there's plenty of challenges. Plus, a lot of the land in the town is conservation, so trying to figure out how to weave your pipes through without interrupting this conservation land is challenging, but not impossible.
And do the new DEP regulations over the past couple of years with regard to discharge also make this more complicated?
Yes, the surface, so there's, when I was getting to that white cedar thing, so we can only put so much groundwater near a surface water, where if it starts to change the elevation of the ponds or rivers, it becomes a no. And I think it's .1 was the original. If it raised the water .1 of a foot, you couldn't use that area. They've started to light it up on that. We've gotten better direction last, because we meet with them roughly once a month with the DEP, and every time we meet with them, they're getting later and later on that restriction. And now it's just down to vernal pools and the white cedar swamps are the two key areas that we can't, they haven't budgeted on. But other areas, we are allowed, so we just have to do a lot of modeling and, you know, studies.
Thanks for the clarification.
Question, you mentioned the military base PFAS remediation area. Would it be wise to discharge in that kind of area? I mean, my understanding of PFAS is that, you know, rainfall and the hydrology is the form of transmission to, where it's getting into the bays and everything else. So do you want to recharge and hydrate an area where leaching may potentially affect further things downstream?
So that's what we're going to dig and do more of this. So they said the site is deemed clean, and that's why it's abandoned now. It was one of the cleanup sites, and they've said they've completed the job. Obviously, you don't, I don't think anybody's, you know, worked for anything. I like to verify everything that gets sent to me, so that's part of that process. At a minimum, it's just to educate myself better when I hear about something, not question them.
John, any questions?
No, just to, so again, the $45,000 is to do the analysis to get more information.
Yep.
Okay.
And then the last article I had on here was for the $75,000 for the Pimlico Pond or Mashpee Wakeby Pond subplant. Right now, that article looks like it doesn't need to go forward as is. We've, there's been money identified through the Cape Cod Commission to, that could fund this project. So it's just, there's another question that'll be before you.
That's consistent with my goals.
Right, yes.
That you just approved.
Yes. Do you want to elaborate a little bit on that substation a little bit? I watched your meeting, so I.
So when I came into the town, one of the things I was fascinated with on the Vineyard is, like Mashpee, you know, you only have so much land on an island. And most of the perfect land is always bought up by developers or people with very large homes. So for us to run pipes, and also in the Vineyard, things can be very remote and then very packed. So in order to do that, it would require running millions of dollars worth of pipe. It just isn't cost-effective to pick up one or two homes. So we started looking at these smaller areas. And in fact, with the conference we just had in Hyannis, they talked about the area I was going to design. So then I came to Mashpee, and I was looking around, you know, seeing the difficulties and, you know, to get to everywhere. And then I noticed the northern part there, the Pimlico Pond Road area, and I'm going, that's not in any of the sewer phases. But yet it's the head of the watershed, which, you know, that's where it all starts. And it's north of the pond, and the pond has issues. So why aren't we looking there? And ultimately, it just came down, I was told, you have to go out of town to get back into town, and then, you know, it's a lot more difficult. And so it was kind of written off. So then I went for a ride up there and said, what's these big open pieces of land? I found that the town has roughly 26 acres just on one of the lots. It's town land unrestricted. So I asked the, actually asked the engineers first, and then I kind of just put a feeler out there about, what would anybody think about maybe putting a little substation up here? And apparently, people really, really like it, and that drove us to putting together a PEF. At first, we didn't think we could make the deadline. We had some information given to us by a former Select Board member that, you know, said, no, no, you guys can submit, and then you can give more data later on. So we verified that, because I like to verify everything. And DEP said, yes, we do that. So it was decided at that point, we could get the PEF done in time, get it turned in. We have funding, so now we don't have to wait on funding. And we're going to try to advance this project. And what that would do is it'd pick up 204 lots. At the northernmost part of the watershed, it should have, you know, with the, a lot of times, we don't worry about, or we don't worry about, we don't put a huge emphasis on really faraway areas, because by the time the water gets to ground, it could take 20 years to get out to the bay. But in this case, you got the pond, which has the river, which goes right into the bay, and you take 20 years, and you just put it down to 20 weeks or less. And so it would be actually more of an immediate pickup, and it should greatly benefit the pond with the phosphorus removal, that's one of the requirements.
In that kind of scenario, would you go for additional capacity to where Sandwich could tie in? And is that being considered by the intermunicipal?
It's actually been, we've talked about the intermunicipal. It's something that we run kind of, we're running on two different timelines. So it's kind of decided, we'll continue with ours, and we'll keep going forward, always keeping in our head, we're hoping at some point Sandwich will be like, hey, we want to tie in too. I mean, as far as the points system goes, that would also increase our points by having two municipalities working together. And they have, mirroring our piece of land is another piece of land right next to it that they have, that's wide open space. That's one of the other reasons why I looked at it. So as a joint venture, we could put more recharge in that area. And it shouldn't be difficult to get a discharge permit, because we're doing a one-for-one. We're not looking to expand or bring water from other locations like we do in our plant now. It's taking the existing septic and just putting it on a, on a cluster system with a better treatment process. So as far as the discharge permit goes, we shouldn't see any mounding.
And I don't think I'm speaking out of turn. In our IMA meetings, there's been a lot of interest on Sandwich's part. It's been trying to get all the logistics together and put things, put things together, but there's been a tremendous amount of interest in, in the project.
And of course, this is one of our goals, just goes. Any other questions? Jared, want to add anything?
No, thank you for having me.
No, thank you for coming here.
Always available for questions.
I'd just like to say thank you for your work, and, you know, it looks like you're approaching this with a lot of different creative ideas and solutions, and, you know, doing a lot of due diligence to try and address the needs in a variety of areas, and not just relying on the, you know, initial Phase 1, 2 through 5 approach. And, you know, just want to thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
The entire board, I think, feels the same way. You're doing a great job, keep it up.
Appreciate it.
Okay, discussion and possible approval to authorize the town manager to request application of nitrogen mitigation funds held by the Cape Cod Commission, up to 183 THFs, for GHD to develop substantial analysis for community septic system north of Wakeby Pond.
I just need a board authorization so that I can seek the funds. It's consistent with what he described and consistent with what we had mentioned.
I'd like to make a motion for town managers to request and apply for nitrogen mitigation funds held by the Cape Cod Commission in the amount of $183,000 for GHD to develop supplemental analysis for community septic systems.
Second motion.
North of Wakeby Lake.
Thank you, David. And a second, Tom. John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Do a good job.
Okay, we received a request. A group of residents representing several communities within Mashpee are writing to request an agenda item on Regulation 25 be added to the July 29 Select Board meeting. The need to build more resilience into the coastlines, improve water quality, and protect our wetlands and native environment can be, cannot be understated. We believe this work is important and urgent action is needed. We have already begun to educate our communities on many of the environmental issues and how we can affect change. As the Conservation Commission is nearing completion of its proposed changes to Regulation 25, and given its potential scope and impact, we are asking to work with the Board of Selectmen, Select Board, and Town Management to engage in a broader set of stakeholders in this important regulatory effort. Having reviewed the most recent draft, we recognize that these changes will have a significant impact, not only on the environment, but also on the quality of life of our residents and the future growth and vitality of our town. We are requesting 10- to 15-minute agenda item on the upcoming board meeting. Brief discussion of Regulation 25. We would like to discuss with the Select Board the changes being proposed and potential impact areas to warrant consideration and deeper discussion. We believe a shared understanding of these proposed changes will lead support to a broader partnership approach. Engage in a public workshop process. We would like to have both the support, engagement of the Select Board, Town Management, the Conservation Commission, and representative of our community in a collaborative workshop process. Our objective is to ensure that this important regulation has defined a set of shared goals for Mashpee, that the potential impacts are considered from the perspective of the multiple stakeholders, and the options are explored to meet these goals in a way that the community can broadly support. We are all members of this beautiful community and wish to preserve and enjoy it with our families for generations. It is with this shared interest and concern that we look to ensure that such important work is given full attention and broad import necessary to achieve our shared goals. Thank you for your consideration for the request.
Madam Chair, if I could, so I kind of, I just want to question as to, you know, how this is on our agenda, because it feels as though, correct me if I'm wrong, it feels like it's outside of our purview. And, you know, for me, I feel as though the appropriate process would be for the association and its members to attend public hearings and things with the actual groups that are tasked with developing this. And, you know, I'm just confused as to our role in entertaining it. And then, you know, we just allocated, you know, 15 minutes to town meeting articles, and then five minutes for mitigation funds. And then, you know, we're appropriating 10 minutes of our time to this group, which is, you know, I perceive them as representatives of a neighborhood association and private development that are looking to influence regulatory changes. That, I kind of, I'm confused. I'm not sure if it's within our scope to do that. And we strongly recommend that, you know, those opportunities, those times to chime in are done at public hearings during those other committees. I believe the, ConsCom has listened and allowed opportunity for that type of engagement. And I think the Planning Board did the same in the past. So that's where I'm a little confused as to how it's getting here, and we're entertaining private development chiming in on regulatory changes.
I think what they are, David, is they're asking the Select Board to be involved in, in a workshop that they want to get together, to go over the.
I'm afraid of the precedent it's setting, to have a private development group.
But they can come in and, they want to.
They can come in and offer comment during public hearings, but to have that type of, that level of engagement with a town body, a legislative body, as the Select Board seems inappropriate. You're, you're, you're setting the, the, you're, you're setting the precedent for that to be the standard that private developments come in and, and do workshops with the town on regulatory changes. I, I don't see that as a benefit. I mean, um, they, I don't want to take away from the knowledgeable people that may serve on the committees. You know, I, I'm sure they have knowledgeable people within those groups, but at the end of the day, I just, there's, there's separation of responsibilities and I don't see that, you know, having that type of interaction is appropriate. I, I question it.
Well, I mean, I'm looking at, we are now, we just spent three or four minutes talking about not talking about it. I mean, if we can stick to the, you know, I'm, it's on the agenda, it's, it's, it's subject to, you know, by the board chair and if it's, if we can stick to the conversation and get right to it, um, but I would like to move right on and it's on the agenda and like to dig right in, but hopefully they'll, they're going to be right to the point.
And we also spent three minutes on a prepared statement as well.
Well, I was reading the letter that was given to me.
I'm just counting minutes.
I know.
Michael?
I wasn't sure which way to go here. Mike Richardson, 47, Slice Way, Mashpee. I'm also the Executive Director of the Peninsula Council and we manage a variety of villages that have, uh, homes and residents who reside on the water and therefore they're part and parcel of why I'm here as well as the associates that with me from Pompaneset Island and Pompaneset Beach Association with a, with a very positive, I think, request. And that is, uh, for you folks as the managers of the town to, uh, to get involved and help, help us, help the communities that we represent walk through, uh, what I don't think is a complicated process because everybody wants to talk about it and they're willing to participate, uh, about Regulation 25, which is right now, as I understand it, in process of being reviewed, created, put together by Conservation and D E P. This group has, uh, asked me to come and just make the request, which I, and I appreciate being able to sit in front of you and talk about it. It seems that this regulation has wide impact to everybody. All our departments who need to be involved, like, uh, Waterways and Harbor, Harbor Management Group, uh, the Zoning Board, the Planning Board, they all seem to have some role in the end result of what's going to happen with water quality. From what I can understand, just from the communications I've had, the only people talking about are Conservation. I don't see any of the other boards involved and it would seem to me that that's more than appropriate for a town like Mashpee to get everybody involved. Secondly, the, the group that I'm talking about from Pompaneset Island and the Council and, uh, Pompaneset Beach have indicated to me that they've contacted Conservation. They made requests for opportunity to participate. Uh, they've asked for more information. They've asked for some interaction where they could speak their piece and be able to say what they have to say. And they have met with a little bit, I guess I'll use the word resistance for lack of another word. It was a result of that, many, I won't say many, several efforts to try to get more communication or collaboration, maybe a better word, that they came to me and asked me to present this to you. That's why I'm here tonight. And frankly, I don't think it's a big ask. All they ask is, is that you take the role that you're responsible for, which is leading the town and get a workshop together involving all the respective parties that need to be part of the process and work through a process where everybody can participate, provide impact for why and what they think is important so that at the end result, we're all singing the same song. We're all happy, we're all willing to go forward, we appreciate the work that Conservation is doing. No one's saying that it's not the right thing. What we're trying to say is we'd like to be involved so that we can participate or we can say to you what we think might be, or should be included in your discussions. So that when you do go forward and create a regulation that we're all going to have to follow, that we're all on board. It's a lot easier when everybody's on board and sings the same song. That's, that's my request.
Madam Chair.
I'd like to have you talk about it tonight. We've got a couple of people that want to speak. I'd like to come back at the end of the session and ask for your vote. Thank you.
Madam Chair, uh, one second, Mike, if I may. So I'm a little confused because, um, you're Vice Chair of the Planning Board. And so are you saying that like Planning Board hasn't had any discussion with Regulation 25 pertaining to Regulation 35, 25? Is that what I just heard?
Uh, I'm not here speaking for the Planning Board. I'm here to speak as Mike Richardson, as a resident.
But as a Planning Board Vice Chair, has there been no discussion at Planning Board?
The Planning Board has had a discussion with this group of people, uh, not necessarily about Regulation 25, but in fact, the fact that the Planning Board took the time and made the effort to have a workshop, uh, made these people feel pretty good about what we're doing as a Planning Board.
But that's not what you just said though.
But they're saying if that, the Planning Board can do it, why can't others?
But that's not what I just heard earlier. I thought you said that, uh, you know, the Planning Board, there, there hasn't been kind of formal engagement.
He didn't say the Planning Board. He said Waterways.
Or boards and committees, uh, haven't had like engagement, uh, formal engagement, engagement. That's what I heard.
There are a couple of other folks with me tonight who have been to the Conservation Department, who have been asking for information, have been asking for participation. They're the ones that probably have the answers to your question. They presented to me the fact that it would seem, because of the size and the largesse of the whole iteration, that all of the departments in the town should have some say or some participation in the process. And maybe I'm wrong and I'll be more than happy to have you correct me, Dave, but at the end of the day, they've indicated that the other boards don't seem to have had much time with Conservation to participate. If I'm wrong, I stand corrected.
I just, I kind of disagree with the, you know, having you be in the voice of the group while when you're a Vice Chair, you're an officer of our Planning Board. It just, the optics are just not good for me. I just have to.
Well, you're entitled, I guess you're entitled to your opinion, but I'm not representing the Planning Board here. I'm representing myself. But if you're willing to listen to the other participants, maybe you can feel better about what they have to say, if that's okay.
Understood.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
So gentlemen, please be brief.
Thank you.
And state your cause.
Good evening, everyone. I'm John Malloy from Pompaneset. I'm the co-chair of the Pompaneset Working Group and a board member of State Pompaneset Bay. Since I joined S P B, the S P B Board in 2013, I've led the efforts to permit and rebuild the Pompaneset Spit and I've had a terrific working partnership with the town of Mashpee. Sea level rise, intense storms and erosion are very real, very serious issues facing all of us. The need for a well-thought-out resiliency strategy, including Regulation 25 for Mashpee is critical. The proposed Regulation 25, which focuses on a significant portion of this town, is complex, severely limiting what many homeowners will be able to do and will change this town forever. Areas within Mashpee, like Pompaneset, are fully built out. So Regulation 25 realistically will reduce the number of homes that are reconstructed. It will reduce the number of additions and significant improvements that are executed over time. And as we've already seen, it, it's starting to encourage people to leave the community. There will be financial impacts that I think it's important that, that we all, the town, understand. There will be reduced property values for some. There'll be limited growth and assessed values in places like New Seabury and Pompaneset, reducing future tax revenue. There will be a reduced non-resident tax revenue available for revenue sharing with residents. And ultimately there'll be reduced fee revenue for the town. From a safety perspective, if older homes and cottages are not upgraded, residents will continue to live in older structures, not designed for future environmental conditions. This isn't good for anyone. We need to get this regulation right and we are concerned misinformation abounds. We have asked the CONSCOM to engage with us in a meaningful dialogue through a workshop, uh, but we have not, uh, been able to execute that. We've been, we have not, uh, the CONSCOM has not been willing to hold a workshop. We've asked CONSCOM to wait until the mass D E P finishes their process, to learn from the hundreds of experts involved in the D E P process, but they have refused. Every other department in town has greeted us with open arms. The Planning Department held a workshop on raise and replace at our request in late June. It was very productive and very well attended. There were items that are part of Regulation 25 that are, that were certainly, you know, discussed during that meeting. CONSCOM has stated they can pass the draft Regulation 25 on their own with no town meeting approval required. CONSCOM has stated they intend to make Regulation 25 more onerous than D E P's regulation. How, why, for what purpose is important to understand. We need to learn from the experts. We must get this right. If CONSCOM isn't going to wait for D E P or hire experts, then we must. P B A, Pompaneset Beach Association, has recently hired Beals &amp; Thomas, an expert civil consulting firm out of Boston, to analyze Regulation 25. Their analysis is due shortly and we intend to share it with the community. We are asking the Select Board to hold a workshop so the community can come together and talk, discuss our goals, discuss the issues, folks' concerns, so that we can better prepare for the future. Please, we're asking you to please partner with the community. Please collaborate with us. Community input is critical to getting this right and community support is critical to making it work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair. So, you know, Mr. Malloy, um, after listening to your prepared statement, you know, it, it sounds to me like the priority concerns of the group or the statement that you read is, you know, protecting assets and preserving rights to renovate and expand and develop. New Seabury's developed very high density over in the area. At the end of the day, I think members of the group, uh, were the Safe Pompaneset Bay Association, the, the, um, there was three different associations, I think, that, that have the word Pompaneset in it. But I didn't hear anything in your statement that spoke to preserving and protecting the, the water body. The water body is what we're trying to protect with Regulation 25. It's the, the Waukau Bay and Pompaneset Bay are becoming eutrophic. We hear every year S masks come in and, and tell us so. And it's at accelerated rate. And that's also going on during the climate crisis with acidification of the waters and algae blooms and, uh, all the other climate impacts that we're facing. And we're still trying to, we're trying to address it. We're trying to put in nitrogen and everything else. You know, preserving and protecting, at some point, this community and the state has to prioritize the environment and not prioritize, prioritize development. I, I, you know, at some point, you can't keep doing the same thing over and over and expecting a different result. The environment is what needs protecting now. We've, development's had its run for years, a long time, and that's why we're in the problem that we're in. And the bays can't take any more development. They can't take, so the, the Regulation 25 is meant to try to address that. And I don't know why we're entertaining, you know, um, private developments. And I'll, I'll just reiterate that, that, you know, I'm, I'm opposed to private developers coming in and assisting us with writing regulations. It's just not right.
I don't know who you're referring to with a private developer. We are a homeowner's community. We have 580 homes in Pompaneset. Pompaneset Beach Association formed a working group, the Pompaneset Working Group, to focus on all of these issues. We're focused on sewer. We're working with our community to see if we can get support to build our own sewer plant or to run lines that the town can afford to run. We're looking at all issues. We're folk, very highly, highly focused on putting a resiliency strategy together for the community that takes into account all of the things. I have had people say to me, aren't you for clean water? Well, of course we are. Look where we are. We're in Pompaneset. We've got water issues at the beach. We've got water issues in Pompaneset Bay. We are 100% in on, on water, but it doesn't mean you can just take our homeowner's rights away because you want clean water. We're here because we want to have intelligent conversations to discuss these things so we can all understand each other's goals and how to get there. Pompaneset has 580 owners, homeowners, which I would bet almost every one of them would love to see a sewer line running by their house. So we're all for sale, for clean water. We're all for cleaning up the bay, but we also have certain property rights. We have people that are retiring there, that we want to retire in place, that don't want to get kicked out of their home. There are certain things that people can do to improve their home. I A systems improve their home. If you don't give anyone an ability to modify their house, they're not going to put an I A system in. So a lot of what we're talking about is trying to encourage people to do the right thing, to put in I A systems to upgrade their discharge. There's a lot of stuff we can do together. All we're saying is can we please have a workshop and talk about it? Because people aren't listening to us. It's exactly, I, I love what you're saying. Quite honestly, I'm all in. We want clean water. We want the bay, but we also can reserve, preserve some of our property rights. We can, I want, I'm 65. I just turned 65. I want to be able to fix my house so I can live here. Don't take that away from me, but we can do this together. We're not a developer. We're a homeowner's community. So we, we're asking you to please talk to us, have a conversation. A conversation isn't being told after waiting four hours at the Conservation Commission hearing. You have three minutes. That's not a conversation. That's not working together. I've spent 11 years working in partnership with a town with State Pompaneset Bay. I know it works because we've had a great run. We've raised over five and a half million dollars at State Pompaneset Bay. We rebuilt the spit. We do all, we saved the, the town a ton of money. There's a way to do this and to do it together. And we're just saying, please talk to us. Let's have a conversation and let's do it together. But I, I totally support what you're saying around clean water. We're, we are not a development group or homeowners trying to do the right thing.
And I, I, I stand corrected for mischaracterizing the group as a developer, private developer, more appropriately a, a, a private and exclusive neighborhood, neighborhood association. You know, still, like, when you speak of community, it's that community. And I'm speaking on behalf of the larger community Mashpee in its entirety and that encompasses both Pompaneset Bay and Waukau Bay. And that's where my interests lie and I prioritize the environment over humans. Anthropogenic environment can change. We can change regulations and change our way of life and the way we do things and policies and procedures and statutes with the, with the stroke of a pen. The environment can't do that. And the, the environment needs our help now. And so that's where I just, I can't drive home enough that we have to prioritize the environment over every, all else and, you know, that, that's, I'll end with that.
Please workshop with us. Let's communicate. Let's talk this through, this, we're all for saving the environment. I've been in environmental focused companies my whole career. So I understand. I've been involved in running the effort at State Pompaneset Bay to rebuild the spit and, and what have you. I know these issues. I've been doing it in Mashpee the last 11 years. Let's have some dialogue. Let's talk.
Yeah, Chris? Uh, Chris Conti?
It'll be two minutes. And, and I am, uh, so Chris Conti, I, my wife and I live at 45 Pompaneset Island Road in Mashpee. Uh, we have just recently retired here. So I am new to town government. Uh, I come from private industry. And so what I'd like to do is offer a perspective. I am not a private developer. I'm a resident of this town. And I think it's important as a resident of this town, when you think about the complexity of the change that we're trying to embark on in terms of protecting the environment and in terms of protecting our waterways, that there need to be a shared, shared set of goals and there need to be a shared momentum around accelerating that change in a way that balances the, the needs we have from an environmental perspective and the rights we have as residents of this town. So I'd like to just provide a perspective that I have from private industry. When you implement change and, and you implement change that is complex and large scale, so if you'll humor me for, again, it's just two minutes. So I first would like to acknowledge and thank the volunteer members of the Conservation Commission who take their time to support the environmental goals of our town of Mashpee. Their work is important as we are all interested in ensuring our town and its natural resources and beauty are here for us and future generations. We are leaving our home to our children. I'd also like to offer my support of the workshop process on such a critical set of guidelines, as is the scope of Regulation 25. In my experience in private companies, when we are looking to implement large scale and complex change, we found there were several important factors in ensuring the potential impact of that change had its intended. impact of that change had its intended effect. We are all about ensuring the scope of the change and the goals we have set have their intended effect. First, we ensured our goals were clear and agreed, as was the scope of our work and our potential benefits. I'm not sure that is the case across all the boards in the town. Without that clarity, you may lose sight of what you are trying to accomplish and fail to garner the support of key stakeholders, and that in turn only increases the risk of achieving the intended goals. Second, we engaged all impacted stakeholders to ensure their voices were heard, that all perspectives were understood and considered, and that potential solutions and additional options were not missed. Engaging a broader group in a constructive dialogue, which is the difference. It's a group dialogue, not individual feedback, but a group dialogue, and an interactive exchange of ideas can be hard, and at times it can be very contentious. But the potential benefits of such an exchange and ensuring the change has the needed support, that all risk areas and potential unintended consequences are considered and addressed, and importantly, that the process is viewed as transparent and consideration of a broad set of stakeholder impacts only helps to build momentum for the effort, and it creates a critically important partnership toward a shared set of goals. And finally, we use those same stakeholders and workshop participants to help mobilize an even broader group in readiness for change. The power of broad and diverse support cannot be underestimated. You can say we represent one portion of this community, but we are looking to engage the entire community. That is the difference. I believe what the partnership of Peninsula Council, Papaneset Working Group, Papaneset Island Association are proposing aligns with approach that I'm familiar with in my work experience. When you, particularly when you want to ensure impactful change with risks and unintended consequences are minimized, a partnership, and a partnership is created among all stakeholders in support of, and in this case, our common goal of protecting this beautiful town and its natural resources while continuing to respect the property rights of all our Mashpee residents and our property owners, as well as the other members of our community, to ensure the vitality of Mashpee continues to grow and thrive. It's a simple ask. I believe an interactive and engaging workshop, not a series of one-off pieces of feedback, but an engaging dialogue, would be a worthwhile addition to the process to amend Regulation 25. Thank you.
Madam Chair. So, before us, I have procedures for amending bylaw regulations under Mashpee's Home Rule Authority. Nowhere in the document do I read where it says that we're supposed to engage with private, exclusive private communities and neighborhood associations in that review process. I don't see it. So, I think what we're being asked is to stray from the typical and broadly accepted throughout the state, state-regulated, procedures for amending bylaw regulations under Mashpee's Home Rule Authority, which is overarching governed by the state authorities and the state's direction on that. As I said before, not sure why this is before us. I think it's outside of our purview. I'd encourage members to attend public hearings and things as outlined in the procedure, and that's the opportunity. It is a transparent process. It is a welcoming process, and, you know, the way that it's drafted here, it provides for public engagement, more so on an individual basis than a collective basis. And that's all I have.
Well, first of all, thank you much for your time. We came with an ask. We asked for a workshop. It's not a complicated ask. It does take time. It does take energy. It does take involvement. It does take a willingness on everybody to listen to other parts of the town and listen to what others that have impact and others that have input want to say. Frankly, I would be disappointed if a board like you, running a town like Mashpee, would not be willing to accept the challenge of doing your job, running a workshop so that everybody can play in the same field with the same process, and if frankly, at the end of the day, the regulation as it's now, as stated to go forward now, is what goes forward, everybody who's concerned from this side of the table would have to say, "Thank you for your effort. Thank you for the workshop. Thank you for listening to us, and we'll support what goes forward." It's not a difficult ask. It's actually quite simple. And frankly, not that you care, but I will be disappointed if you don't vote on it in the affirmative. That's just my request, our request. No one's arguing the facts, David. No one's arguing that we have some issues. All we're saying is, just talk about it so that we can all say we're in agreement. So, I'd ask for your vote. Thank you.
So, can I ask you, Michael, a question? Mike?
John, Michael.
Mike? Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Well, do you have, do you have a timeframe with, you know that you have to spend some time to put this together, but I have to believe that you're well advanced on that. What is the amount of time that you would need to pull a plan together that we could work with?
Well, I guess, I think the regulation, I'm not sure when, is it an October deadline for the regulation to be done? I'm like, I'd have to check with Conservation, but they haven't told me, so I can't, I can't answer your question. We're, the folks that I'm, that I'm talking with are prepared to sit down at the table anytime that you guys are willing. I mean, you know, the timeframe is really now. You know, I realize everybody's busy, but if we don't do it, or if you're not willing to do it, it won't get done. So, I think, right, now would be a good time. Not tonight, of course, but.
Madam Chair, I mean, again, I, I do understand all sides of it, but at the same time, they are citizens. They want to be heard. I don't think there's anything wrong with setting up a working group. Maybe Mr. Collins can come up with a suggestion that, I don't see a problem with setting up a working group so they can be heard, and whether 25 goes forward, as is, as Mike mentioned, or not, at least they're being heard. From what I heard today, they've made efforts, they haven't been heard in the committee, so they want to be heard. I don't think it's a big deal to let them speak. If not, we'll, you know, public comment, we could, they can all line up and keep on talking for three minutes, and that's still not giving us an opportunity to have a dialogue.
Mr. Town Manager, something was presented to us during the presentation. Could you explain what that is? The packet?
Yes. There was a request from the Conservation Chair that came in that if this subject matter did come up, that I share with the board the emails, which we made copies of this afternoon, and you should have them.
Has a copy of those been entered into the record for this meeting?
I'm sorry, sir. I just printed this this afternoon, and I told the assistant to have them ready, and I'd be more than happy to give them to anybody that wants them, because they're a public record now that you have them.
Thank you.
Yeah, the Recording Secretary does have them.
Excellent. You know, I think, I think, again, I'd have to object, and I strongly disagree with John trying to move it forward, only because, you know, as I stated, there's procedures. They're outlined in front of us. Nowhere in that document does it say, and after listening to the group, you're creating an administrative burden and you're creating a precedent. I didn't hear the committee say that they're going to include Southport, Windchime, you know, the other, any of the other private developments in Mashpee. They only advocated for Papaneset kind of community, is what I heard. And so, you're going to, you're going to put the administrative burden on our board to have to reach out to all those private, exclusive communities to engage and do workshops and all that collectively? That's, you know, it's unnecessary. It's not, it's not framed in the, we're stepping out of our bounds. One, there's process and procedure right in front of us that doesn't include that, and it's a fair process. There's public hearings like everything else. You know, it's the way we do business as a town.
I don't see any, anything wrong with having a workshop and listening to residents that live in this town. We have workshops all the time on other things. We had a workshop on conservation lands and.
Mashpee Commons.
Mashpee Commons.
Everyone would be entitled. Anybody can go. It's not exclusionary.
There's a process and a procedure right in front of us, and it doesn't sound like what you're describing. It doesn't, it doesn't mention anything to that effect.
Madam Chair, may I? I'd just like to, you know I'm a process person. I'm, I'm looking at process and policy all the time, and I have to agree with Select Board Member Whedon. We have procedures for amending bylaw regulations under Mashpee's Home Rule Authority, and those are clearly laid out, and it appears that's what we should follow. Thank you.
You're asking us to stray from those policies and procedures. That's, that's, that's what you're asking.
Well, I think I.
The advocates that want to have the workshops on asking for that, but as a board member, you're asking us to stray from those procedures. That you are. They're defined right in front of us, black and white. Where in there, show me the word workshop in community, it's kind of community groups participating in that. I don't see it. It's not there.
How about discussion and review of feedback at public meetings?
It does say that.
Yeah.
Right. You can offer public comment, and, you know, there's times and places for that.
And so, all we're doing is encouraging council, feedback at public meetings.
So, instead of calling it a workshop.
We'll call it a public meeting.
Public meeting.
Haven't they already done that?
I don't, I guess, they're here today to tell us that they haven't been given.
The Planning Board had.
Great opportunities.
I believe the Planning Board did.
They did acknowledge that.
Can I just talk as the Planning Board Chair?
No, Mary, please. Let us, let us discuss it here. Please.
Just let.
Mary, please.
We just let another group talk. We were supposed to be for 10 minutes. We entertained and listened to them. I'd like to hear.
We've been listening to you.
I'd like to hear what Mary has to say.
David, this is, I chair this meeting, and I am not bringing in another chair. I mean, now stop. John?
Why?
Do you want to go forward?
If, why?
Instead of calling it a workshop, we'll have a public meeting, or you have a public meeting, and we'll come. I don't know how the process is for that.
Can I just make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
No matter what you do, I think you need to hear what the other perspective is, and I don't know what it is. I know the Conservation Agent is here. I don't know if the Chair is here.
Yes, Paul's here, too.
And I know that there's been some back and forth. None of us here, including yours truly, have been part and parcel to that conversation.
Neither have I.
And even if you were going to suggest a workshop, I don't know what the scope of it is, and that's what needs to be identified in terms of what is the purpose of the workshop. I believe, from their perspective, it's to try to focus on Regulation 25. But then, the other part to it is whether or not the process that's underway has been exhausted and hasn't worked, because there is a working group. And if that has failed, then how has it failed? And there's a lot of unanswered questions that I don't think need to be aired tonight, because we might be here until midnight, but I think there are a lot of things that need to be addressed that, that haven't been. The other thing that concerns me a little bit is, is the process part of it, is when is the board going to be involved?
Right. When do we become involved in something like this?
Well, obviously, the board is the executive body.
Right.
But, again, there are a lot of questions that haven't been answered, and I don't know the best way to go about it at this moment to resolve it. But I think you gotta maybe get the other parties together, and I understand that in order to do that, we've got to post it and have a public meeting.
Okay.
Or otherwise, we're violating the open meeting law.
If I may, we came with an ask, and not surprising, we didn't expect it to be an overwhelming sure. We expected to have some interaction and conversation. And by the way, I support everything you said, Dave, about the environment. We're not, we're not here just disregarding what we have to do, but I can't speak totally for the group, but if you were as a group to say that we would seriously entertain a workshop, if you would come back with a more specific request, we can certainly do that. I didn't necessarily think, you know, there's two, there's three, one word and one number, Regulation 25. That's, that's pretty simple in terms of what we're looking for.
Michael.
But if you need more information, we're happy to provide it.
Let, let's leave it like this at the moment. Let us work with Town Manager and Legal and see how we can go forward with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I don't think there was any vote anticipated tonight. It was a discussion.
Discussion.
So, I would leave it alone tonight.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
It would be premature to take a vote.
Thank you. Okay.
Public comment.
Public comment. Gregory McElfrin.
Doing swell on yourself?
I'm doing good, Dave. Good to see you. You know, I have to agree with David somewhat. I mean, I think being, knowing your lane's important, knowing what lane you're in in your governance is important, and the Select Board has a very wide lane, and you can do a lot of different things, and I think engagement and dialogue is really a good thing, because you get to hear another person's perspective, you get to understand their views, and maybe you can teach them something and they can teach you something. So, that's all I want to say about that. I wouldn't hear talk about that. But I have been watching this summer a number of committee meetings in Mashpee, and one of the things that's interesting is that each committee has a certain lane it should be in, and I've seen a lot of crossover of lanes. A lot of committees going into this lane and talking about this group not doing what they should do, or maybe they should do it differently. And I think, you know, the good citizens of Mashpee, when they come before a board, need to be judged on the regulations and the things that are within that purview of that board. If they're coming for an ask, they should look at the regulations and see if the regulations support that or not, not based on another group or another committee and what they're doing. They have a right to be heard and have a right to have an understanding on that, and they have a right to have a good hearing that's fair and impartial, not when you come into a meeting and it looks like their minds are already made up. That's not fair to anybody. That's not good governance. That's unfair to residents. And I'd ask you to look at that and give people, you know, some guidance, because you guide these, these appointed boards, you guide them, and you're the appointing authority. So, that's what I want to say about that. Another thing I want to say about Jared, about the, about the, about the hiring of new people, we've been told, as Mr. Collins said for a long time, that we would be outsourcing that. I think it's a great idea to look at different options, get as much cost effectiveness as possible, and go that direction if you can. So, that's a good ask on that. I am concerned about the usage. It's been banted about, I've heard that they've been talking about, you know, charging people based on the usage of bedrooms that they have in their house. I don't know any utility that charges you like that. They charge you on your usage. The Water Department here and Town Department charges me on my usage, not how many faucets I have in my house. So, usage is important. And lastly, and the last thing I want to say in my 30 seconds, phew, that was a lot. I support the MOU that's coming before you regarding the tribe. I voted on that back in 2018, 2019. It's a historical property. It needs to be preserved, and I hope you will agree with me on that. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Brian Whedon.
Brian Whedon, 133 Main Street. It's been five years since we voted on this at town meeting. The parsonage is not only a part of the tribal history, but also the town's history. We should all be concerned to restore this historical building as it is in the historical district of the town. And after the recent fire that took place, I would hope this would be a priority for all of us. This is the second time we have come before you all with an MOU for the parsonage, and hopefully it will be the last for this particular subject. What other group or organization has had to enter into an MOU to access CPA funds? Yet alone the tribe, who's been here long before the town's existence in 1870. Are we being targeted, or does everyone get this treatment? Will this same thing happen with the 12 acres warrant, or the expansion of the Old Indian Cemetery? It's good to know that the federal government isn't the only one who takes their times on issues and gives us the good old runaround. This MOU before you this evening should be approved with little discussion and opposition. My only recommendation or request would be to extend the deadline as a year is not realistic. I would like to see this be changed to at least two years, so we have more time, unless you want us back here again next year. Let us also remember the meaning behind our beautiful town seal, to live and work together in harmony. I hope you will keep this in mind as you vote this evening. Katabatanmu, thank you all.
Thank you. Okay. New business. Discussion approval of a special event, Annual Night Out Public Safety Complex, August 7, 2024, 5:30 to 7:30.
Motion to approve Mashpee Night Out to be held between the lawn area between the Police Department and Fire Department, August 7, 2024, 5:30 to 7:30.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also.
Hopefully, the whole public turns out, all the public.
It's usually a good one.
It is.
Okay. Discussion approval, accepting the following resignation. Two minutes. Sewer Commission, Precinct 2, Representative Chad Smith, term expires June 30, 2025.
Motion to approve the resignation from the Sewer Commission, Precinct 2, Representative Chad Smith.
Second.
Second, yeah.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. With regret.
With regret, yeah. He's actually-
Interview and discussion and possible appointment of the following. Zoning Board of Appeals Associate Member, term expires June 30, Mike Milbury. Hi, Michael, you want to come up and sit?
Sure.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I moved to Mashpee about three years ago upon retiring from, my last gig was broadcasting. Before that, I was a professional athlete and coach. I have six children and 12 grandchildren, and I'm only on my second wife. But I have been here full-time for three years, and I've enjoyed it. And I've had time on my hands, so I thought I could get involved. And we have a couple of guys that we go out to dinner with on a regular basis from the zoning board, Ferbisch and Cagiano and Charlie Reedy. And, you know, they've sort of encouraged me to get involved in town government, having had the time and the interest. I applied for a position on the Finance Board and was appointed to that. And have been working with them, although it's been a kind of a light time. And now, I've applied for this position with the zoning board, went to their meeting, discussed with them my situation. Thought they approached things in a really concise and fair way, and so it appealed to me.
And you're available for all their meetings?
I am. I mean, I, I'm here full-time. I don't have another house. So I'm, you know, I may scoot away for, from the winds of Mashpee in January sometime, but I, I won't be gone for long.
John, any questions?
No, I, just a couple of things. You know, one, I'm a big fan.
Thank you.
But second of all, I really appreciate the idea that, you know, your big interest in getting involved in the whole thing and giving back to Mashpee. So I really appreciate that. And that goes for any member that steps up, because there are a bunch of positions that are open, and hopefully other people will follow your lead. So.
David?
I'm a little off, only because the, unlike some of the other considerations before us tonight, we only have one preliminary evaluation form from, I can't even read whose signature that is.
The Chair.
Assuming that took place after I had an interview with the zoning board last month.
But, you know, per the Policy 001, we're supposed to have, you know, all five evaluation forms. And then there's a recommendation that's then, I mean, we've been asking for this level of consistency over and over, and it's still not being adhered to by the respective bodies. And then, you know, we're supposed to appoint, you know, the people most qualified for the roles and responsibilities. And it's hard to determine when you only have one evaluation form. And from you, you don't even see how the other members voted. And there's no attachment. I mean, the attachment's kind of vague and on the front end. Wouldn't really like to see a resume and stuff. So in your opinion, what skills and past experiences bring, bring, and what do you bring to the-
Yeah, what am I bringing to the table? I've been involved in a lot of political situations. I was a union representative while I was a member of the National Hockey League and had some interesting collective bargaining situations. I became a general manager shortly after my, my playing days were over. And that involved me with a great many of decisions regarding not only my own franchise, but franchises throughout the National Hockey League. And negotiating with, you know, ownership and, and the players' union was, was fascinating for me. And I thought it was something that we could, I could handle well. And can tell you right now that I'm not, I'm not a builder, not a developer. You know, I don't have all the ins and outs of zoning regulations now. I was gonna, you know, it didn't look like the thing that I'd pick up first off the table for reading material, but I obviously would need to do that. But I think when I talked to the zoning board, and when I, and I saw them work at their last session, I was impressed with their ability to hear people, come to a decision, and act fairly. And there was one particular case where somebody was trying to put out a front porch, and it was going to extend their, their footprint, and it's something that they don't, they don't want to do. And they were really reluctant to do it. All the gentleman was, you know, the father of a guy that was disabled a bit. And so they said, let's just delay this, and we'll talk about it some more, and you can come back and see me. And I thought they handled that with not only, I guess, political correctness, but diplomacy.
Madam Chair, and to David's point, the Chair of, is here. I'm curious to know if, if it'd be okay with the board, if he spoke on behalf. And I'm assuming that this is like a summary. This is the summary page of everyone's opinion. And-
I will say that at that meeting, they did hand out evaluation pages to everybody on the board. I don't know what happened to them after that. I certainly didn't see them.
Yeah, the way the Policy 001 reads is that everyone's supposed to provide, be provided with the form, ask a series of questions, they evaluate, they each comment and fill out the form. And then those handed it in collectively. But then the Chair writes a recommendation, either we strongly recommend, recommend, or don't recommend, is the way it's supposed to be framed to us, so that we have a collective understanding.
I can understand that.
And the process is fair for every appointment.
Sure.
That's Policy 001.
Sure.
Mr. Bonvy, would you like to come up and, since you're Chair?
May I step back?
No, you can stay there.
What's it happen to you?
He can share a mic.
So I can tell you that, well, Ron Bonvy, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Milbury came, Milbury came in front of the board. We all discussed his want to be on the board. We had a typical discussion with him about not needing to know a lot about zoning, because most of the members of the board started with not knowing very little whatsoever about zoning. It comes over a period of time. But more importantly, we all voted. We all voted in favor of Mr. Milbury. We filled out sheets. The sheet that you have is, my signature's on that sheet as the chairman. That's why you can't read it.
It's true.
That's why I know it's my signature. And that being said, what I, my ask would be is, tomorrow, if I have to, I will go to Mary Ann and I will get those sheets. And if they don't, if they're not there, I will go around to each individual member and I'll get them done tomorrow. I'm hoping that Mr. Milbury can come on the board sooner than later. We do have a need for additional people. A lot of times, we're dealing with only four members that are voting, and some people don't choose to move forward as, as that's their right. And so I'd like to keep things moving.
Is that satisfactory to you, David? Do you want to have all the paper in front of you?
In the future, I'd like to have, you know, all the paper in front of me.
So what do you want to do?
You know, for me, though, I just have to say that I've watched some of the meetings of the, of the zoning board recently. And, you know, when I do watch them, it's a very friendly and space. And, you know, when I hear, you know, the diplomacy and things of that nature, like, I feel as though, there's a lot of boards and committees in, within the town of Mashpee that I feel need to go for additional training. Because at the end of the day, there's roles and responsibilities, and I often question if we're following and inhering to those roles and responsibilities. At times, you know, as Chair, you know, as Chair, I feel like sometimes the committee, the zoning board offers up solutions to the applicant on how to navigate the process or find, you know, solutions to find a yes. And I don't feel as though a regulatory authority, that's the role of the regulatory authority, in my own opinion. Members of the Committee, of the Select Board can disagree.
I just want to issue that we just spoke.
But, I mean, it's very friendly and comfortable, you know, joke and laugh.
My goal as Chairman of that board is to certainly follow rules and regulations, number one. And number two, to do what this town expects me to do. But more, as important, as important, is to also, people that are in front of me, to treat them with respect. And if their goal is to do a given project, and we can find a way that they can do that project under the rules and regulations of this town, I'd like to do that for them. I think that, I think that's important. I think that's one of the roles of the ZBA, and it should be the role of most boards of community, in this community. And I'm saying to do it within the guidelines of our, of our structure. I'm not trying to say, let's find a way to do it illegally, unethically, or anything like that. But if I can find a way to do it legally, morally, ethically, I'm going to find a way to do it.
Right. I mean, no disrespect. Madam Chair, I'd like to motion to approve and recommend Mike Milbury for the zoning board.
I'll second that motion.
Any questions?
Discussion.
Yeah.
I certainly don't want Mr. Milbury to have to come, come back in. I would like to get the other copies, only because, again, I'm a process person. If we agree that we have a policy, we need to follow it. This isn't controversial. There's one person. Had we had two people here, it, it could well be controversial. So I would like to request that those come to the Town Manager's office. I certainly don't want Mr. Milbury, who's volunteering to donate his time, to have to come back again.
It's okay. I mean, I, I get it. I mean, there's a way to do things and-
If I have to, I will run around tomorrow to see if I could fill that hole.
I just, again, we set, we spent a lot of time setting Policy 001. I would like to ensure that we adhere to that policy. So if we could, if you could back up and do that tomorrow, I'm fine with that.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. John?
Yes.
David?
Uh, yes.
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 Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. And you are now on the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations.
For bringing him forward. He shows a good guy. Enjoy your night.
Thank you.
You, too.
Okay. Cultural Council Member at Large, term expires September 30, 2027, Rochelle St. John.
Motion to rec, oh, we have Rochelle.
Good job.
I saw all the paperwork was here. Sorry, Carol.
Good evening. How are you?
Well, actually, I want to say first, this is the first time in my life I have ever been to a town hall meeting, and it's been fascinating.
Well, good. I'm glad. Now you're going to be involved. That's how you learn.
Yep.
Okay. So we're going to, let's see, we have your, tell us a little bit about you.
Well, I moved to Mashpee two years ago. And I really appreciate the diversity and the cultural roots in this town. I began volunteering at the Mashpee Senior Center more than a year ago. And now feel like I want to become more involved in the community.
That's great.
I'm a retired social worker. And in my previous life, I had many opportunities to help organize special events and write grants. And for more than 40 years, have found numerous ways to support the arts, oftentimes with co-writing grants and/or editing them. And just feel like the Cultural Council would be a good fit for me.
That's great. Have you looked at the forms?
Again, I don't see the summary page, right?
Right.
Again, so, again, far for the course, but in this case, it's similar.
Right.
If we did have multiple members, it could become, we'd probably have to pass it off to the-
I believe there is a summary page. I believe it's the last page, where it says preliminary evaluation.
Right on the back.
Oh, it's just different. It's a different format.
001. So it's here. It's here.
I'd like to have a motion.
Motion?
Motion to approve Rochelle St. John.
I'll second the motion.
John?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Beautiful recommendations and resume. Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And yes, congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you for volunteering.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we have a cultural member at large, term expires September 30, 2026, Celeste Kramer?
Celeste.
Celeste, I'm sorry. We didn't scare you off, did we?
No, fascinating meeting.
I agree.
Rochelle, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Okay. I moved here eight years ago from Medfield, Massachusetts. And I've been very involved with the arts. I still work a little bit with interior design. I was working in Osterville, and I work part-time. So I'm also a pastelist. So I belong to many different art organizations. That's primarily, my focus has been in the arts. And as a, I was the president of an organization called the Hannah Adams Club in Medfield, which was mainly a women's organization with educational monthly meetings. And part of my role was to make sure we had the right board members on our team. And also to, we would get applications from the seniors in high school and vote on who would get the scholarship awards. So I feel like I have a lot of experience with understanding people and what their needs are. And I understand the goals of the Cultural Council. And we want to make sure we use the funds that are given to us by the state in a wise way, so that everybody benefits from whatever performance it will be.
Good. I have a- Any questions?
No, I think-
I have a motion?
The evaluations speak for themselves, and as you have. Motion, motion to approve Celeste Kramer for Cultural Council Member at Large.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm a yes.
And I'm a yes also. Thank you. Congratulations.
Have to commend the Cultural Council for adhering to 001.
Completely.
Just a shout out right there.
Okay. Discussion and approval of Parsonage Restoration Project, MoU of Understanding. We have it in front of us.
Full disclosure, you know, I serve as Tribe's Historic Preservation Officer, and so I want to recuse myself from voting on this particular line out.
Okay.
Madam Chair, okay. As the Tribal Chair referred to-
Madam Chair, okay. As the tribal chair referred to a few minutes ago, this has been lingering for quite some time for various reasons. But there were conditions initially placed on this that have been called into question as far as being able to be satisfied. And most recently, it brought, it was brought to my attention that the structure itself is in a state of desperation. And the vice chair, along with some others, brought it to my attention. So we were trying to fast-track bringing before this board and ultimately to CPC. I haven't gotten to CPC yet, but that's my next step if you give me an affirmative vote. And essentially, what has happened is we're trying to get the funds necessary for the purpose of addressing the priority. There was a historic preservation restriction that was originally on, and the tribe advised, now, this is processed or was processed through legal, but the tribe advised that cannot legally agree to such a restriction. In the alternative, it was proposed that the tribe adopt a resolution designating the subject property for cultural and historical use, and filing an acknowledgement of this tribal action with the Registry of Deeds. This agreement is finally satisfactory, and I just want to get it done. This has been going on and on, and I think there is nothing that does not protect the town's interests from a legal perspective. And also, it will hopefully fast-track from this point on, provided that I can just get to CPC, because I need a vote there, too. Former council, not to be confused with current council, did advise me that it would take a vote of this board and the CPC for the sake of getting this addressed. I did have a conversation with the vice chair, and I did assure him that this MOU in its final draft form was going to be brought in tonight. And here we are.
Any questions?
Madam Chair? Thank you for that explanation. The only real question I have, and I'm looking at, I don't think the pages are numbered. It's the final page, E. And in response to Chair Whedon's comment, I'm wondering where it's so difficult to get people in, to get work done, if there's a reason that that becomes null and void as of July 1, 2025, rather than July 1, 2026.
No problem with the extension.
Okay.
We can just change that. If you amend that, then, as long as I'm authorized to execute. Again, I can't do it according to former council without CPC.
And again, just as clarification, isn't this re-appropriating? Because we, it's all it is, is basically continuing on the MOU from, what, three, four, five years ago, correct?
Yeah, it's been a long.
That's, I mean, so I.
Process.
It's a reapprobation for funds.
It extends it, and I think just by extending the date.
It's fine.
Just to give more time to get it done.
A motion?
Motion to approve.
And to authorize me to execute.
Execute.
Motion to approve and authorize town manager to execute the Parsonage Restoration Project Memorandum of Understanding.
I'll second that motion.
With the amended date.
With the amended date.
Thank you, John. With the amended date, July 1, 2026.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes.
And Dave Whedon recuses, for the record.
Exactly.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Discussion and approval proclamation of National Suicide Prevention Month, September 24. Michaela?
Proclamation 2024. Whereas with September recognized as Suicide Prevention Action Month, the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition invites our communities, mental health advocates, prevention organizations, survivors, and allies to join us in helping to destigmatize mental health through initiative taking, taking action towards suicide prevention. We seek to raise awareness and visibility of suicide prevention resources in our communities, and help connect individuals with the appropriate support services, such as 988. And whereas, according to the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, AFSP, suicide is the second-leading cause of death among individuals between the ages of 10 and 34, with more than 49,476 people dying by suicide annually in the United States. And whereas with an average of 132 suicide deaths daily, each one directly impacting 125 additional people, including friends, service members, family, social media connections, and neighbors, we know a sizable number of individuals have been impacted by suicide. Whereas Bountiful County's suicide rate is 1.5 times higher, standing at 14.4 per 100,000 versus the state of Massachusetts' suicide rate of 9.4 per 100,000, we recognize the need to create hope through action locally. Whereas our local Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition works hard to spread the word about prevention, awareness, education, and action through training, forums, and events in our region. Whereas the town of Mashpee commits to being an active prevention partner with the Cape and Island Suicide Prevention Coalition, and publicly places its full support behind those who work in the field of suicide prevention and research, mental health, community health, education, and law enforcement who deal with this daily. Whereas we encourage all residents to take the time to understand mental health and suicide through education, and recognize that we need to take care of our mental health while we take care of each other. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Mashpee Select Board hereby proclaims the month of September 2024 as National Suicide Prevention and Action Month in the town of Mashpee.
Wow.
So as a family member, as a person who's experienced suicide within my family, and recognizing that Native Americans experience higher suicide rates, 20% higher rates throughout Indian country in comparison to the rest of the United States, I'd like to make a motion to approve and recognize the National Suicide Prevention Month proclamation. And the date was?
September.
September.
2024.
For 2024.
Heartfelt second.
Thank you.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Thank you. Okay. Old business. Discussion and possible actions of articles, October 21st. When are the dates that we have to have this started?
Well, we should be trying to get this done. I mean, there's not much to it, really.
Okay, I know there isn't. So I think we can.
Pretty much wrap it up in a pretty quick manner.
So.
I know that the town manager does have one thing to add.
Right.
On one of these articles. And you presented with the others.
With four of them tonight. Right.
There were six, I think you gave me.
Right. So if we can.
So if you're, you may still want to hold off on the two personnel until we finally get that decision. But other than that, I would.
Kind of start it.
Whether or not you think.
Is everybody okay?
Was okay or not.
Okay.
And add and approve if that's what you want to do.
Okay.
I'd be good with if we just.
Start.
We can take easy ones, and if we want to put a hold on.
Okay.
Discuss further.
Okay. Article one. Okay, that one's article one. Article two?
This one here, the boss will be talking to you about.
Okay.
This is the flow neutral. And he'll be talking to you a little bit about that, so.
So just hold on that anyways.
So Article three, to see if the town will vote to reserve FY estimated CPC funds 10%. So that's an easy one. We can do that one. Do I have a motion to?
Add it to the.
Add and approve.
Motion to add and approve Article three.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article four, to see if the town will vote and rescind past action and return a certain amount to the community preservation. Do we have the amount?
I don't know if we do yet or not. I'm sorry.
Hi, Arden Russell, Chair of the CPC. We do not have the amount yet. We are finalizing our negotiations and are closing on a portion of that property. It would be ideal if we could wait until that was complete, because you never know when something.
Because I don't want to, I don't want to leave it open until, I would like to have the amount when we execute.
But I think if you, you can add it to the warrant, though, and then wait to approve.
Yes, of course.
What day, what are you talking about execute?
Sometime, first week is September, I think.
Okay. Yes, we can, we can do that.
Motion to hold on Article four.
Unhold, okay. Five.
Do you want to go back to that Article two that he had?
Article two, Rodney?
Yes, from the health agent, I would like to remove the flow-neutral bylaw from the town warrant for October 2024. He would like to get some opinions back from town council. He has not had enough time to make changes and to present to the board. And this would cause for less confusion.
Okay. I need a motion to remove Article two?
Motion to remove.
It hasn't been placed on there. So I'll just, I'll just make sure it's taken out of your next.
Without objection.
And Article five will put on hold, because we don't have an amount for that one.
We don't have an amount yet.
But you did add it to the agenda.
We definitely will have an amount. We, there's an appraisal that should be done shortly. Is it 475?
To see if the town will vote and transfer the community preservation uncommitted fund balance in accordance with Mass General law for the purpose of funding 475 Nathan Ellis Highway Project land consisting of eight and 13,100 acres, more or less designed, designated on Mashpee SS's map. Do we want to add?
Well, you want to just motion to add, and then we'll.
Motion to add Article five.
Thank you.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Madam Chair, question.
Uh huh.
Should we do the same with Article four, or is there a reason?
That's what I was, I didn't.
We just.
We put a hold on it.
We put a hold on it. Can we, can we add?
We can add.
You need to add it, yes, please.
All right. Motion to add Article four.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela? David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article five.
No, Article six.
Six. What do we want to do with Article six?
Motion to hold on Article six. There's not enough information there.
What, why are we holding on it?
Just.
No information.
Until we get more information, or maybe we won't, and we'll just.
I thought that all this information was forward. Now it's not.
We don't have an amount?
Is six Gooseberry?
It's number, it's number six. There's just no.
There's nothing.
It's Gooseberry, so.
It's Gooseberry.
We have.
We're not talking about that tonight.
We're meeting with town council in, at our next meeting in August. There was, due to the threat of litigation around this issue, so.
This has been going on for so long. It's, I don't understand why this hasn't been moved along. It's a parcel of land for sale, or to be developed. I don't understand why this is.
Well.
One problem after another.
My understanding was previously, it was not for sale, and it is just, this application was given to us four days prior to the deadline for the submission of warrant articles.
Prior to the deadline, four days beforehand.
For submission of warrant articles. Prior to the deadline for submission of warrant articles. So we received it on September 3rd for September 8th deadline. That did not give us enough time to get an appraiser, get the amount, negotiate with the owner. We had four days.
Deadline. It was your deadline four days before.
No, our deadline was four months prior to that.
Four months.
Yeah.
It was our deadline.
So the CPC had a deadline that the applicant did not meet. He submitted the application four months after the deadline for submission of applications.
So she's still, the CPC is still attempting to work with this.
They don't have any, enough information.
They don't have what?
They don't, there's not enough info at this point, at this time.
No info.
So just Article seven is wastewater, and we don't have enough information yet.
Right.
And it's still doing research.
Motion to hold Article seven.
So we're putting a hold on six, a hold on seven, and a hold on eight.
Eight. Eight is the same thing. That's, that's the lead.
I think we need to vote on.
We don't add them. We don't add them yet.
I said, do we need to vote to hold them? Hold them. Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
No, we don't, because it's, it's not on there yet.
It's not on there yet.
Right. We don't have to vote to hold it.
No.
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
You haven't added it.
Right. So once we add them, then we have to hold.
Right. Okay.
But, so then Article eight is, that's the lead wastewater, so that's a, nothing yet.
Okay. Article nine. First, groundwater recharge. Oh, we want, we want to, we want to do that one.
This is one that's going to rescind, and then following one will redirect the funds.
So we're going to, oh, okay, yes. So a vote to add and recommend?
Yes.
For Article nine.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Article 10, vote to add and recommend.
Second.
Tom?
They're both the same article, basically.
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article 11.
Article 11 is.
To add 75, not to exceed 45,000 appropriate to existing.
This is to do the evaluations of the plants.
Vote to add and recommend.
Yes.
Second.
Motion.
Tom?
To add and recommend.
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Number 12.
Article 12, vote to recommend and add, or add and recommend Article 12.
Yep. A second.
Thank you. Tom?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And 13. This is the placeholder for the school committee. They want to.
I'd like to discuss this later, if you don't mind.
I would, too.
Okay.
So we're just holding that.
Hold that one.
Yeah, just.
And Article 14, it's a.
That's a petition.
A petition article.
Nothing to do there.
We have to add that one, so if you.
We can add.
Yeah, you don't have to recommend, but you have to add it.
But we can add it.
Motion to add Article 14.
Second.
Tom?
Yes.
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 David?
Yes.
John? And I'm a yes. Okay.
That's it.
Leison Reports.
I, I, never mind. I'll do it underwater quality.
Okay. My Leison Reports, I just want to remind everybody of the Veterans Banner Ceremony, August 3rd at 10:00, Community Park. The rain date is on the 4th at 1:00. And I am unable to speak. David is going to speak at that event, and all board members are invited. And anybody else?
David, you got that in all three calendars?
I got a wrong clock on that one.
Okay. Water quality.
Water quality updates.
Water quality updates. Amy Dufault, who works for Mass Tech, is hosting a Waste No Water Library Tour, and Mashpee is invited to participate. I just spoke with her today, and it was very, very brief. I can send more information to the town manager's office when I get it, so he can distribute it. But the date is Friday, August 9th, 2:00, at the Gatuit Library. And again, I will send the information when I have it.
Great. Any other leisong reports? Town manager updates.